Matt, you should be able to hear us now.
Sure can.
Okay, you're up next. Just hold on just a sec.
So, there was a good reason for it. We just have not had it come up yet.
Yeah, I. May I recommend the motion that Chair Sarver could make, I mean Vice Chair Sarver could make is, and I think it protects the same language, it says, will be considered an unexcused absence unless a motion is passed to excuse the member. And that will cover it.
It's kind of like the same thing you were saying, like, we could change it if we felt it necessary.
So, for example, if Vice Chair Sarver got a call that there's a family emergency and had to leave, the commission could vote to excuse the person. But if Chair Sarver, Vice Chair Sarver got up and left, it would still stand as an unexcused absence.
Eventually, it would be the same as not taking it immediately.
Correct.
I would accept that.
All right. Do you want to make, recommend that change?
I do.
You do? Is that a formal, do we have to second it?
Yeah, I would say it would be.
I'll second it. Change has been made and seconded. Any discussion on the change? Moving on, any discussion on the bylaws, additions?
Well, hold on, Grant. I mean, Chair Sarver, we need to vote on the amendment now and then go back to the main motion.
Okay. So, the motion which Commissioner Sarver has made, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And further, I just want to make further record, we understand what the motion is. It was to add unless excused by the Planning Commission at the, after the word "absence."
Would that require a commission vote or would that be up to the discretion of the chair?
It'd be a commission vote.
You vote.
Continuing with the motion with the bylaws, are there any other changes, deletions, additions? With the additional motion, all the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries.
We'll get the updated bylaws on the website and then send out a link to all of the planning commissioners.
Thank you.
Do business. Resolution 3151, Comprehensive Plan, Periodic Public Participation Plan, and Project Charter.
Get that page. I'll kick it off. I'm going to kick this item off and then I'm going to toss it over to Matt Kovit, who is our consultant working on this. So, tonight, we're asking you to make a recommend, to receive a briefing and make a recommendation on the Public Participation Plan and Project Charter for our 2024 Comprehensive Plan update. The draft resolution 3151 will also kind of be the council's initial, or sorry, official kickoff saying we are updating our comprehensive plan between now and December 31st of 2024. There was a briefing on this item earlier, I think I want to say back in March or April, on the Project Charter, or Project Charter and also Public Participation Plan. There is a recommendation memo in your packet and also a suggested motion on page 17 of the packet after Matt finishes, it kind of goes over the high levels of the Project Charter and Public Participation Plan. So with that, Matt, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Jason, and it's a pleasure to be with you here this evening, here virtually, I guess I should say. We're really excited to be working with the city on the Comprehensive Plan. We've really enjoyed working with the city on other projects in the past and we're, you know, we're still in the very early stages of this, as you know, but now is the time to kind of set the foundation for a successful project, which is really what a charter and a public participation plan is all about. So, for those of you who aren't familiar with a project charter, it's kind of like a, it's kind of like an MOU or something that basically just sets out, you know, who's responsible for what, who are the main points of contact, you know, who's sort of in charge on the city side, on the consulting team side, and lines out a schedule and some like risks and mitigation for those risks. So, really, the high level highlights of the main things to pay attention to in the Project Charter, which I believe you have in your packet, there's a lot in there about kind of the regulatory and kind of policy level underpinnings for this. But where the rubber really meets the road in developing the plan, we talk about some local, some city level desired outcomes, which include, you know, a really user-friendly, easy-to-navigate document, a robust public engagement program, policies that are easy to understand and navigate, policies that meet state and regional requirements, adopted growth targets that reflect planned growth during the planning period, goals and plans that are aspirational but fiscally responsible, protection of the environment, taking reasonable steps to address climate change, providing housing for all community income levels, developing strategies to really implement this plan that guides city initiatives, programs, and development code regulations. And lastly, creating a vision that guides and leverages public and private investment. The team deadline for this that we've set for ourselves is September 30th, 2024. The state technically gives until the end of 2024 due to a state law change last year, but we really want to make sure that this is wrapped up by kind of the end of September, you know, just to leave some, to leave some room in case, in case there's some additional work that needs to be done, but also just because there's, you're going to be entering a, I believe, Jason, you're going to be entering a budget discussion and you kind of want to wrap this up before that. So that was really important that we line this out in a way that's going to work for the city. There's some material in here that's really most useful for staff and on the consultant team and the city team in terms of internal communication. I will point you to the schedule. There's a, there's a general schedule located on page eight of the, of the draft charter that has the phases, kind of the action phases of the process, of the project, the timeframe, and then the key deliverables. And there's a more detailed schedule in the appendix as well, but that's just kind of a high-level view of that. There's a public participation plan that's included in this document as well, and I'll go into that more in a second. But really, this is, you know, public participation is required of comprehensive plans, and the city's going above and beyond what's required in developing the public participation plan and some of the tools and techniques that we're going to be building on. You'll see on pages nine and 10 and 11 that there are the key points of contact for the consultant team and the city, you know, that'll be, that'll be Jason and myself and Clay White at LDC and a couple other consultant team members. But we're really, we're really kind of responsible for ultimately for all the deliverables being done on time. There's, there's some work in here on sort of the decision-making process and reviewing information. Last thing I'll point you to in the charter to look at is the risks and mitigation. One thing that we work really hard on is identifying, and this is where a charter can really come in handy, is identifying some potential risks upfront, you know. A comprehensive plan is a long and really involved project, and things can, things can happen related to the schedule, things can happen related to implementing new state laws and new state guidance on existing laws. And so, you know, that's, for example, the new housing element requirements. The Commerce has produced some guidance on that, but that's, there's a lot of work there. And as you know, the housing landscape is continually changing with, at the state level. And tribal collaboration, there's another bill about tribal collaboration that's going to, that's going to impact City of Bonny Lake. And so, we're really kind of at the, at the leading edge of working with the state to help develop some guidance for cities on that. And so, I can, I can pretty confidently say that you will be among the first cities to know how exactly to coordinate with tribes under a comprehensive plan because we're working with the state office that is in charge of that. So, there's, there was a new state law requiring communities to follow certain procedural steps, coordinating with tribes and offering tribes the ability to comment on comprehensive plans. And, you know, there was a lot of, as with many pieces of legislation, the details kind of come later in the code, administrative code process. We're really kind of plugged into that and working really hard to help that make sense for you and for every other, every other city out there. So, that's, that's the, that's the Project Charter. Really, as I mentioned, it is a, it is a document to help the team hold itself accountable, to kind of set up goals and expectations, a schedule, and some communication protocols, and to identify risks and the way we mitigate those risks, which is what I was just referring to. Any, any questions on the charter before we go over the high-level public engagement? Jason, anything to add?
No, as I said, the Project, as Matt had mentioned, the Project Charter is just our guiding document of how we're going to work together to get this accomplished. Doesn't set forth any sort of decision, just kind of a guidance document.
The Public Participation Plan, which comes next in the document in your packet, so that's, starts from the general, which is, you know, the key milestones and the overarching principles for public participation for the plan, which include inclusivity, sustainability, and transparency. And then establishing the overall goal for the, sort of the implementable goal for public participation for this plan, this draft public participation plan, is the residents of Bonny Lake are informed about the city's comprehensive planning, have ample opportunities to provide their input and understand the role that the plan plays in the future of the city. You know, this is, this is going to be planning out to Bonny Lake's centennial. And so, so this is, you know, there's a lot of kind of additional, additional meaning there. And, you know, thinking about, thinking about history and also thinking about the future, it's a really big opportunity there, and we want to, we want to, as much as possible, have the public have a sense of the role that they play in, in planning for the future of the city and sort of how, how what they do matters. There are five primary objectives identified. You can find those on page 16 of the plan. Those include building public trust, creating ample opportunities for engagement in different, different, different methods, including, you know, making sure that there are online opportunities, in-person opportunities, opportunities that are at different times of the week or at times of the day. And then, and then lastly, which, and potentially most importantly, the city will reach residents, businesses, and community-based organizations while taking actions to engage harder-to-reach audiences in the community, such as people who are older, people who use Spanish, people with low incomes. So, really, an effort to, to ensure that the, the public input in the comprehensive plan reflects the entire population of Bonny Lake. The, the, the key messages that we're really focusing on, page 17, we are updating the comprehensive plan to reflect how residents of the community want the city to grow and develop, thinking about where the community wants to be in 25 years. And that's really, you know, that's, this is not, sometimes in comprehensive planning and public participation, there's a, there's kind of this, you know, do you, do you, do you support the city doing this? And the specific thing, and we're going to get to some specifics, you know, later on in the process. But really, in this, in this, at this high level, this is about, you know, we're coming up on 100 years. What kind of community do you want to be when the city's 100 years old? Think about the past, then think about the future. The Comprehensive Plan guides citywide policies on topics that affect our daily lives. So, this is really about translating what's in the plan, especially things like housing and infrastructure, into things that affect people's everyday lives. When the, when we think about our shared values and goals, we create policies that benefit the entire community. And there will be a wide range of public input opportunities. So, it's not, you know, you know, it provide input once and then the team disappears into the back room for a year and comes out with a plan. There will be lots of opportunities throughout the process. Looking at, on page, page 18, we really start looking at some specific methods and some general timeframes. It's a little more specific in the project schedule, which is found in Appendix A of this document. But methods include community-based organization interviews, the racial equity report, which will involve some, some public meetings, mini-surveys in English and in Spanish, which are really designed to get people's input at places where people aren't, you know, don't typically have a lot of time to think about responses to the survey. So, if we're tabling, or if, if we're trying to specifically reach, you know, working families, a mini-survey that's designed to take, you know, less than five minutes is going to be a lot more palatable. Tabling and community events, a scoping meeting for the environmental impact statement, and of course, the public hearings that the Planning Commission will lead for the, for the, for the scoping for the environmental impact statement and for the draft and final Comprehensive Plan. You'll note some information in there about tribal collaboration as well. You know, as I mentioned before, we, we're mindful of, of the ways that the city has communicated with tribes in the past, as well as some of the new requirements that are coming down the pike from, from the state. We have, we've identified some preliminary partners and, and community contacts. And if you look on pages 19 and 20, that's really where we're going to start. That's, that's our list of kind of the, the agencies and the units of government, but also the community organizations, many of whom will, will be participating in interviews as part of this process. And that's, you know, everything from the Food Bank and Communities for Families Coalition all the way down through senior assisted living facilities, faith-based organizations, Beautify Bonny Lake, a wide range of groups. So, looking for your input and feedback, if you have any, on this list. And then, there's some documentation of kind of the materials that'll be produced and the, you know, the meeting summaries that'll be produced, and then the, the public participation schedule on pages, pages 21 and 22. So, that's, that's the Public Participation Plan. There are a couple of appendices. There's the, the full kind of Excel chart, bar chart kind of project schedule with all of the deliverables, as well as the, the scope of work. But I'm really eager to open this up now, and, and any questions that you all have? I can, I've got the, I've got my draft open here, and I can, I can, you know, if it's Public Participation Plan questions, I will pass that along to, to PRR, who's the engagement consultant for this, and we work very closely with them, and Jason does as well. So, looking forward to any comments or questions you may have about the Public Participation Plan.
Yes. Eric?
So, when you're talking about the different meetings and the different, you know, planning, like, community organizations and everybody, and then going out into the public and stuff like that, where does the Planning Commission fall within that? Is that going to be something we get to do and go out and be part of those? Or is that something the city is going to be doing?
That's a good question. We have, we have found in the, in the past, just speaking from other, other engagement programs we've been involved in, that having one or more planning commissioners attend meetings, if, for instance, if we're going to table at a, at an event, a community event that's put on by a, by a community group, that having a planning commissioner stop by or be present for some of that can be really helpful because it's, it's a, it's kind of a, a window for, for you all into, into kind of the, you know, the nuts and bolts of how we actually get information. And it's also a good opportunity for, to kind of, for everyone to kind of see like, you know, oh, this is all, this, what we're doing is we're collecting this information from you now, and eventually, like, this is going to be put into the drafting of the plan, and the Planning Commission's going to be reviewing that. We're going to be, you know, having these meetings and working on it, public meetings, and eventually hearings. So, it's not like it's exclusive. I, I think it's not written in this document here, but I think I'm going to make a note about this because we've, we've found success with that in the past. I don't know if you all have, have participated in events that way before, but it can be, it can be effective.
Matt, I'll jump in here on the end of the two. One of the things that's going to be, that I was going to mention during staff comments is at the next meeting, we're going to be, I was going to have you bring your calendars because we will be doing table exercises at concerts in the park all through August, or all through July and August. We've already got the tables set up for both the comp plan and the parks plan update, which the Planning Commission is also involved in. So, through those tabling exercises, we're hoping to have two planning commissioners, maybe three, but no more than three, because once we get to four, it's a meeting. So, that's why I was going to say bring your calendars for a schedule. But, and also, when we do open houses, we typically have those hosted by the Planning Commission. So, anytime there's a public open house, it would be hosted by the Planning Commission. So that, and it's advertised as both an open house and special Planning Commission meeting so that all the planning commissioners can attend. So, I know that's not spelled out specifically in the document, but those I know are specifically two ways that the Planning Commission will be involved.
I remember the shoreline management open house. Got an awful lot of work done there and had some very interesting questions.
I tried to block that one out of my memory.
Well, I remember the couple that came in and said, how high should the? Look.
Bulkheads.
Just absolutely wonderful question. Yes.
It was actually similar. So, I know, looking on this list, I'm in like three or four of these groups. And I'm sure there's other planning commissioners that are also members of these other groups that you are contacting. So, that's why it was kind of a similar question to Carrie's. If, if we have, we have connections already to these groups, could we, like, could you let us know when you're meeting with them and we can participate?
Or it would be better if you're, if you become the liaison between the city and that group.
Yeah.
That's what we would rather have, is if you're already, if you are serving on one of these groups, please, you know, send me an email so I can let Matt know, and then we can begin to identify specific points of contact and have you serve as the liaison between the city and that group. It works better if we're coming through somebody that's already a member of the group versus me just kind of, or Matt, or anybody from the team just picking up a phone and calling them. So, if you are a member of one of the groups that's listed, please shoot me an email and say, I'm on this group. I'm willing to act as liaison. And when we start to do those interviews, I think it's Leslie Harris that will be doing the interview with those groups. You know, I, some of them were doing interviews, some were not, you know, it's just going to depend. But, you know, just let us know which ones you're part of, and that way we can begin to identify a list of this one. The other one is if you know of any HOA contacts, let us know because we're trying to formulate a list of all the HOA groups in the city and their contacts. So, if you know your HOA and who the contact is, just send me an email. We're going to be putting a list together. Matt, sorry to jump in there, Matt.
That's perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. I'm making note of all this for, for Lawrence as well, for PRR. Any additional questions?
Yes.
List of contacts for the private parks commissions? There's two or three of them out there.
That would be the HOAs.
Yeah, they're, they're not the same as the HOA though because.
You, you would be the only one that is the private park that's not part of an HOA. I know, I know which one you're talking about, the Church Lake Park. Yeah, that's a weird one, but yeah, I would put it under the HOA category. So, if you have contact information for them, you know, but like, I know like Deborah Jane has an HOA in a park. Sky Island has a park, but it's also got an HOA. So, most of them do have HOAs tied to them. Yours is kind of, that one is kind of unique, but I would just put it under the HOA list and send me the contact information and we'll put them on the list.
Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Thank you all very much.
So, there is a recommended motion on page 17. And then I will get with Matt and we'll get this all updated before we take it to the city council.
Who would like to make a recommend, make a motion to recommend us? Oh. Okay, well, we'll get the motion going again.
I think it's page seventeen.
Scrolling.
My computer's locked me out, so I'm doing it by memory.
Well, there it is. Okay, I've got it.
Oh, you wanna do it? Go ahead.
Oh, no, you can do it if you got it.
Okay, you do it, still second.
It's all good.
Uh, I move to recommend that the city council initiate the comprehensive plan periodic update and adopted, and adopt the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic update, project charter, and public participation plan.
Second.
Second. Uh, I believe there's a correction.
Yeah, very minor one. Uh, page fifty-three, or three oh three, under the memorandum. Oh, that's the, that's the next item. Okay. I would just point out that there, it says two hundred, doesn't say two hundred feet or anything else.
All right, let's, yeah, we'll wait.
Okay.
That, that's the next item on the agenda.
Any, uh, other comments, additions, changes? Call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours? The ayes have it, the motion carries.
All right, Matt, you can hang out and listen if you'd like. Um, this, the next item is the housing affordability measures based on the HAP, so...
Oh, God, I would love to, but I actually, I actually have another planning commission.
Yeah. I was joking, go off and enjoy your night.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next one is housing affordability technical memorandum.
So in, uh, June of, uh, 2021, the city council adopted, uh, ordinance sixteen fifty-four, um, officially adopting the city, uh, the Bonny Lake Summer Housing Action Plan, uh, which contained a series of potential actions and strategies to address affordable housing. Um, uh, and so then later that year, um, the city council was able to obtain a, a, a grant, um, and in February twenty twenty-two, or day four, twenty twenty-two, we accepted that grant, it was for a hundred thousand dollars. Um, it had three objectives. One was to, to update the city's ADU regulations, which has already been completed. The second one, which was, was, uh, to update the city's, uh, CPO regulations, which we received a briefing on, and you'll be having a public hearing on, uh, on May seventeenth. And the third and final objective was to take measures to increase housing affordability diversity and availability by basically streamlining, um, our, our code, and through cost reductions by removing, uh, items that caused additional cost. Um, so the memorandum was one of the deliverables, and it identified specific items and actions that we would take. Um, the first one that we already took, which, one of the ones that we identified was streamlining our design review process, um, which, we've already taken the first step of that, when the council adopted ordinance sixteen eighty-six, uh, eliminating the design commission and making the design commission, the design review process purely administrative. Uh, the second one that we're proposing as part of this is to expand the list of exemptions. Uh, currently, only single-family detached homes and accessory uses are exempt from design review. Um, we're, we're proposing to also add now attached single-family homes, townhouses, duplexes, and fourplexes. Uh, the city doesn't really have separate design standards for those structures, uh, so the designer view just simply adds time and cost, but not value to the review. Um, and any, any, any review we could do, uh, we can do as part of the building permit process. The, the second one is to open, update our open space and private recreational requirements. Uh, currently, in the R three, we require that twenty percent of, oops, I just caught a spelling error that I might have to correct. Um, twenty percent of the site is required to be maintained as open space, with ten percent developed for recreational use. Uh, the code amendment is to change to just a hundred ninety-three square feet, uh, per unit, so if you have a large lot with not a lot of units, it's proportional to the amount of units you have, not the size of the property. And those standards are based on National Recreation Park Association standards. The other part of that is to allow, to exempt properties that were within quarter mile of a public park from having to provide onsite recreation, because there is a public recreational facility within walking distance. So you're basically requiring double the park space in those, in those instances. And in the, oops, went too far. Uh, the last one was that we identified some items to reduce the kind of cost of infrastructure to provide housing. Um, the first is our furniture and lube program, we, which we already have, and allows for two and three lot short plats to paint and lufe install, install, uh, instead of installing furniture improvements and placing electrical and ventilation lines underground. The proposal is to, uh, amend this section to allow up to four lot short plats, and also allow for basically residential developments containing four or less units to also participate in that program. So they basically pay and then lufe to the city, and then we go and construct sidewalks in areas that it makes the most sense, versus having these little segment, segments of sidewalk all over the place. Um, currently, we have a sewer connection exemption that exempts single families and duplexes, if the sewer line is not, if there's not a sewer line within two hundred feet of a sewer main. Uh, the proposal is to expand this exemption to allow up to four, uh, buildings containing four units or four lot short plats. The, if the sewer's over two hundred, two hundred feet away, it's just cost prohibitive at that point to begin to install sewer lines. Uh, so you have a lot of smaller projects that are just not able to get off the ground because of that one requirement. Um, so that would be that. And then the last one, uh, is to basically, uh, allow access tracks, um, for up to, uh, I believe it was four lots or less, to use a proper, the, we would incre, the proposal's to increase it, uh, to, I think it was six, but I forgot to put that in there, so I do apologize, uh, to, to go from four to six for private access track. Uh, the other one that we had specifically talked about, and then there was one I forgot to put in here that I wanted to mention, um, was switching to a bedroom-based count, calculation for off-street parking for multiple dwelling units, which the council and the planning commission have already recommended, uh, back in January when we did our annual code update. The fifth one that I, I, I knew I was missing one when I was typing this ord, this resolution or this memo, was a couple of years ago, the city council adopted, there was a provision that allowed us to clawback a specific, I think a fractional percent of the state sales tax for affordable housing. Um, we did that, it's called the Affordable Housing Fund, and currently, we get about forty thousand dollars a year in that fund. Um, it wasn't an increase in taxes, I said it was a clawback of sales tax that the state was already collecting. Uh, so the fifth one would be that for low-income housing units, um, there's a definition, I think it's those making less than fifty percent of the AMI, that we would use that fund to pay for their transportation and park impact fees. Uh, so it would reduce the cost of providing the housing, um, while at the same time not shortchanging those funds, because they would be paid from another funding source. And I can answer questions about any of these. This will come back, I, I will say, this is a fast-tracked item, because I have to have it done by Ju, the end of June, in order to get all the grant money. So this is a fast-tracked item, so you'll be seeing the ordinance implementing these in short order. I just had to get the technical memorandum adopted by a resolution for the grant as a deliverable, so we're gonna basically turn around and give you the ordinance probably on May seventeenth.
Uh, on number five, as you're talking about the, um, uh, affordable housing part, how do you know that, like, i- if you use that money to help pay for their park impact fees and stuff like that, what's to say they don't pull out of that later on and raise their rents and stuff?
They have to require a, require a fifty, uh, I think it's a fifty-year covenant on the property.
Okay, awesome.
So, and then they have to basically provide reports that the rents are equal to the fifty, you know, no more than, the rent is no more than thirty percent, I'll say this, the rent is no more than what someone who's making... There's two, so you have fifty percent of the AMI, so whatever that income level is, and that the rent is no more than thirty percent of that income level.
Okay.
If I'm saying that correctly. So it's thirty percent of the fifty percent is the equal to, equal of the rent.
Okay.
Big shakes?
Yeah, just inserting the word. Yeah, and line two. And I took out a shall instead of a shall. That was the one I'm, I was like, oh, I missed that one.
Oh, and I had, I had one too, um, on the, uh, so on number two, update open space down at the bottom, where you were just talking about it, if a plant is within one quarter of a, and I think you need to add mile...
Yep.
...from the public park. Actually shows up twice.
Oh, I'm not gonna lie, this one, we were, I was frantically typing this as we, I was running out of time to get things to Debbie, so it didn't get to go through all the draft drafting process.
One other thing, too, just in the suggested motion, it says, uh, affordable technical committee be transmitted to the council. I think that should be changed to memorandum, probably.
Yep.
Okay.
You are absolutely correct.
But, nice job putting it all together so fast.
It, I, I'm not gonna lie, this was one of those ones where I was typing very fast.
If it was me, there'd be a lot more flaws, so I think.
Or anything else? There will entertain a motion. I can make the motion, since I've got the correction in front of me here. Um, I move that the housing affordable technical memorandum be transmitted to the city council.
Second.
Any discussion? See this again, I'm sure. Call the question, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours? The ayes have it. For the good of the order, correspondents? Draft comments?
All right, I do have a few tonight. So the first is I'd like to introduce Kennedy Speets, I hope I said that right. Speets, I'll get her right. Uh, she is the new assistant planner for the city of Bonnie Lake, um, and will also be taking over as the planning commission clerk, um, uh, replacing Debbie in her long years of service. So Debbie, I think, will be with us for one more meeting, which will be the May fifteenth, or, yeah, May seventeenth, May seventeenth meeting, uh, and after that, uh, Kennedy and I will be kind of running the meetings, and with Kennedy acting as the clerk. Uh, so with that, I will, you, you wanna add anything with Kennedy?
Nice to meet y'all.
And Kennedy is from the local Bonnie Lake area, so, uh, the, the next one is, we, as I mentioned earlier, uh, Commissioner Kubler stole my thunder, um, please bring your calendars to the May seventeenth city council, or not city council, planning commission meeting. I've been in a shoreline hearings board all day, my, my brain is a little scrambled. Um, to come up with a calendar for the concerts in the park, um, we will have a table there with both, uh, conceptual designs for the parks to get public comment on, but also for initial kind of outreach on the comprehensive plan update. Um, so having commissioners at those, those, those concerts, I believe they're, Debbie, do you know what time they start?
They start like at six, don't they?
Yeah, yeah, they have the, the, the before thing, it starts like four-thirty or five.
Yeah.
Yeah, the open market, yeah.
Yeah, and so...
Market, that's what I was thinking.
So we will not be doing planning commission meetings in July and August, because we'll be out there in the parks on Wednesdays. So, um, if we need to do a special meeting, it'll have to happen on a Thursday, um, because I will be with my staff out there helping to get that input together, too, so, um...
Jason, do you have any idea what bands are going to be which week, so that we know which ones we want to volunteer for?
I believe David Wells does, and it's on the website, so you might wanna contact David Wells for sure.
Okay, okay.
And I will be gone for most of August, so, um, Betty and Kennedy will be running it for August.
Good.
And, uh, just, uh, the last one is, um, we did go to the, oh, sorry, two more. We did go to the city council last night to brief the city council on the draft options for the Allen York Park. Um, they basically kind of concurred with the planning commission's recommendation to focus on the, um, uh, option three, um, so we're now gonna start exploring, because there's gonna, just that doesn't solve the problems. Like, there's gonna be a lot of other things that we're gonna have to figure out as we explore that option, um, so that we will be moving forward as that is the principal, uh, design. There is gonna be a public open house. Those sketches aren't gonna be released as part of that online open house, uh, we want to gather a little bit more input, and then during the concerts in the park, we'll be doing tabling with kind of concepts for all the parks, I believe. Uh, and then whenever I had, like I said, on the open house, um, we do, it's gonna be kind of frantic, uh, through the rest, through now and June, um, we're gonna give you the summer off to enjoy the concerts, um, so I'll get with Debbie to get me, and Kennedy to get meeting cancellations out, and then I'm not sure what we're gonna do about the September meeting, um, because as always, the first week of September is the Planning Director Conference in Shalane. I know, well, it was me that I have to go to Shalane in September, um, for a week, I know, it's, it's a hard life, but I'm not here for planning commission, so we may look at sliding it a week to the, the twelfth. But that's all of my comments.
Commissioner, comments?
Welcome to the team, Kennedy.
Yeah, yes. Uh, it struck me as going out to these public events, a few years ago, we bought t-shirt, oh, polo shirts. Probably the, the company that made them still has them, is, is there an interest in buying a shirt to wear for meetings and open houses?
I don't think that's true.
Sure, yeah.
You know, Grant, the other thing is, is that we all used to have name badges, mammal style.
Yeah. I've got two.
Yeah, I've got two.
Okay.
You could have one of mine.
There you go. You can just wear one.
I don't, I don't know who ordered the name badges, do you remember who's, I remember it was Dawn, do you know who? So Debbie, could you look into the name, because I think I need one, Kennedy will need one, Betty, and then who, who from the planning commission doesn't have one?
I don't, I don't have one.
Jeffrey...
Three, four.
Carrie, Debbie, and Jessica.
I just can't...
Then she doesn't have one.
That's true.
And then, um, I will, I will talk to Ryan and John about the shirts, and I will let you know. As, as slow as they move, we probably wouldn't have them in time for this year. Yeah. Oh, they closed, so we, we're trying to find a new vendor, so...
I am.
May, maybe name badges would be the way to go.
Dude, I don't know how to use it, though.
I just need somebody with a cricket.
The what?
I could probably figure out how to use it.
A cricket's a little, oh my gosh, you guys, it's a little device that you can cut out like...
Lionel and...
And, yeah.
You can do all kinds of...
We actually, I have a cricket...
All right, the crafty people are taking over the meeting.
I have heat press.
Oh, so maybe we just pick Carrie, and Carrie makes one.
There we go.
Crafty people are taking over the meeting. All of a sudden, we went down the crafty hole.
Do you notice who knew what a cricket was and who didn't know what a cricket is?
I knew what a cricket was, but I don't, that's us.
Jason's like, I ain't telling you, I know what a cricket is.
Oh, could we have some decorum, please? At this time, Debbie, we have to recognize you.
Too bad.
Too bad.
Too bad. They picked tonight, I didn't know.
You have all of us present.
And I don't know how many years you have been the clerk.
Fifteen and a half.
I was about to say, it's been, I've been here for ten, so it's been the entire time I've been here.
I started in...
Yeah.
All of them.
Um, so you've been through a lot... All of them. So you've been through a lot with us and we appreciate it. I have something for you.
No, you have to come back.
Oh, you still have to come back. We do still need you. We appreciate you.
Yeah, don't, don't abandon Kennedy yet.
He's like, you can't leave me. Don't leave me, Andre.
I just like five minutes and stuff out of it.
Give this to Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. We appreciate it.
Oh, that was it.
That was it.
Different people to the, you know, come through.
Off Design Commission, Steve Vlad, you were with Steve and so, you know, because I did that for, how long did we do that? Twelve years? Cancelled. I was gonna say, it's gotta be maybe.
The whole time I was, some haven't even been started just before I got.
Yeah. So Debbie and I've been, we worked that for, so, yeah.
Modern projects. I, I miss the Jacobsons.
No, no, yeah.
You never have anyone come anymore, don't you?
Back in the days when we were talking marijuana shops and stuff, there was a lot livelier.
Oh, yeah. I am not writing that ordinance again. I've written it twice.
Lot of history. Seriously. Thank you, Debbie.
Yes, thank you, Debbie. I will say, I wouldn't have made it through the first ten years without you here. I mean, I do a lot of the typing, but I will say there's lots of Debbie emailing me at nine o'clock Friday morning, Jason, you have packets due. And I'm like, when? What's the deadline? What's the deadline?
So.
And I have to say Debbie has the most unusual recruiting requirement methodologies for planning committees. I was in the department at Safeway and somebody approached me while I was trying to pick my favorite ice cream and said, why aren't you on the planning committee?
It worked.
It did work. It did work.
Oh, big bucks.
Hey, I did, I did get everybody a raise last year.
True.
More than paper money.
I doubled, I doubled, I doubled your pay.
Yeah.
Hundred percent raise.
That's what I wanted.
I had no control over that one.
I feel like we all need that type A personality that keeps us on board. So good job.
Debbie has kept me on board with a lot of projects. It's gonna be sad not having her on this comprehensive plan update because she helped me on the first one. So a little disappointed that she's leaving me during the comp plan update. But, but yes, the first copper, this year we have a huge consultant team. The first comp hand, the one that we wrote last time was me and Debbie. That was, that was the team, me and Debbie.
That's to get my comments.
But yeah, I would say thank you as well, Debbie.
All right. Motion to adjourn. I move. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Does anybody ever just want to say nay?
Stay here forever.
What I've always. Commissioner Hubler, I think you should do that next time. Just say nay for fun.
I was like, I think interbylaws, we can stay up till.
What I usually do is all those opposed.